Good evening and welcome to the Pasco City Council Regular Meeting of December 2nd, 2024. The city thanks you for being present and participating in this meeting. In regular meetings, we take action. We do have formal action on items that are listed on the agenda, and we also have the opportunity for public comment. For anyone following along via online, the Agenda packets are available at www.pasco-wa.gov/Agenda. I don't know why that was so hard tonight. For anyone present on that small table, as you will enter immediately to the right, our meetings, including this one, are televised on PSC TV Channel 191 on Spectrum Cable in Pasco and Richland, and is streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, YouTube channel, and GoToWebinar. This and previous council meeting videos available also on the city's website. Lastly, the public may submit their comments or ask questions by contacting the city manager or city clerk. We're using the Ask Pasco app outside of our public comment period. With that, Ms. Clerk, if you can call roll.
Brajas.
Present.
Blaisdell.
Present.
Brin.
Here.
Harpster.
Present.
Parelles.
Here.
Milne.
Here.
And Serrano.
I am here.
We have seven council members present, Mayor.
Thank you. If you all please stand with me and join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. With that, we're going to move on to item number four, if you're following along, to the consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by a roll call vote as one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. However, if further discussion is desired by council members, the item may be removed from the consent agenda to the regular agenda and considered separately. So with that, it's quite a lengthy list tonight. Got item A, which is the approval of meeting minutes for November 18th and November 25th. Got item B, which is bills and communications, approving claims in the total amount of $6,276,599.78. Item C, Resolution Number 4534, project acceptance for Argent Road Widening Phase III. Item D is Resolution Number 4535, project acceptance for Court Street Overlay Project. Item E, Resolution Number 4536, acceptance of work for a new Pasco animal control shelter. Item F, Resolution Number 4537, bid award for Martin Luther King Jr. Community Center remodel and expansion Phase I construction project. Item G, Resolution Number 4538, I-182 and Broadmore Boulevard Interchange Project Change Order Number 9 approval. Item H, Resolution Number 4539, Pasco Water Treatment Plant Phases III and IV Drinking Water State Revolving Fund, additional loan acceptance. Item I, Resolution Number 4540, Amtrak National Railroad Passenger Corporation Intermodal Transportation Facility Lease Agreement. Item J, Resolution Number 4541, Basin Disposal Inc., 2025 Proposed Rate Increase. And finally, item K, cancellation of December 16th and 23rd, 2024 regularly scheduled council meeting and workshop. Before I get a motion, do we have any discussion from council or anyone seeking to move an item? Seeing none, Mr. Milne.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the consent agenda as written.
We got a motion by Mr. Milne and a second by Ms. Blaisdell. Going to do a... All in favor say, yeah, this is a roll call, right? That's what I was thinking.
Yes. Harpster.
Yes.
Parelles.
Yes.
Brajas.
Yes.
Blaisdell.
Yes.
Brin.
Yes.
Milne.
Yes.
And Serrano.
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Alrighty. With that, we'll move on to item number seven, or five. Geez, I am sorry, I'm not on it today. Proclamations and acknowledgements, none listed. Item number six is public comments. This is the opportunity for the public to address council on items unless it relates to a scheduled public hearing. At that point, we'll have you... Yeah, so let me go through my spiel and then I'll call people. Unless it relates to a scheduled public hearing. So, public comments appropriate when I say go ahead and go, unless it relates to a public hearing. This item is provided to allow the opportunity to bring items to the attention of city council or to express an opinion on an issue. Its purpose is not to provide a venue for debate or posing of questions with the expectation of an immediate response. Some questions require consideration by council over time and after deliberative process with input from a different number of different sources. Some questions are best directed to staff who may have access to specific information. Citizen comments are limited to three minutes, as you can see by our little timer here. Those with lengthy messages are invited to summarize their comments or submit written information for the council outside of Fort Memorial Meetings. Lastly, when you are called upon, if you can state your name and county of residence. With that, public comment is now open. And ma'am in the blue, go ahead and lead us off. And when you get up to it, if you can push the button to the right side, looks like a little mouse. No, not the mouse, the mouth, like the little gray button at the bottom. Yeah, thanks, Thomas. We got a... Oh, there we go. We're on it. So with that, go ahead, ma'am.
Sorry. Hello, my name is Angelica Campos, and I live in 416 West Sylvester. And the reason that I'm here is because I have a question about... I've been living in that house for more than 25 years, and I never have no trouble, no problem. So, I can't remember how long ago, but it used to be a bus stop. Like I say, I live in 416. The bus stop, as I was, 14. So they moved the bus stop to 14, but the beginning of my property. So, okay, well, there's... Sorry, my English is not that perfect. Anyway, so there is a line that they do from today, it's three Mondays ago, they do that line. So they put a line all the way one side to another, and they say it's 50 feet. But my question is, I don't... Well, it's not a question, but I don't have a parking spot. You know, they take my whole parking spot, you know? And I go like, okay, that's fine, where I'm going to park at. I always say like, I'm an old lady, I work. I get out, I go to work at 6:30, I keep parking in the alley, it's dark in the back right now. And I just go like, right now, yes, I can walk. But when it gets snow and ice, what I'm going to do? You know, if I fall or something? I came and talked that same day, I came and talked to the cross street here, I mean, across here at the window. And they say they don't have nothing to do with that. They tell me to go to the mainest city hall. So I went there, I talked to Juan, I guess, that's his name. So he say he don't know why, and they don't know what's wrong. He say he's gonna find out. They haven't... Well, he called me and just say, you know, hang on, they're gonna see what's going on. So, you know, that's why I'm here.
Okay. I see some nods from our city manager and his lights on, so he may have something.
Yeah, so we're aware of the issue. It looks like the transit system moved the stop in front of her residence. So we can, I think, if we don't, we can get your contact information and put you in touch with Benton Franklin Transit, who was the agency who decides where those move. But we're happy to try and put you in touch with the right folks.
Okay, so I need to get a hold of them, or?
We'll get your information.
Alright, I think I already give it to one of the girls, ladies? Yes, okay.
Yes, thank you. We have your contact information, and we have reached out to BEFD, that's Transit, to find out the reason for the transfer, for the relocation of the bus stop, and also to find who would be a good contact that can potentially speak in Spanish also, to be a more comfortable discussion. And we have not received an answer from BEFD yet. But since this happened last week, and last week was a very short week, we're hoping that we hear back this week to provide you with the information.
Okay, alright, thank you so much.
Thank you, young lady. Do we have any additional public comments? Carl.
Good afternoon, Council, Carl Holder. I'm responding to the video that I saw last week regarding the lodging tax recommendations. And I'm very disappointed with the council in not approving those recommendations as presented by the LTAC. And the city staff recommend to approve. Of course, city mayor Serrano is the chairman of the LTAC. And they said that there's been significant growth in the program, now up to 18 proposals. And the city recommended the mural program go forward, which is, I appreciate that. One is complete, one in progress, and one under consideration. And then at minute 12, two hours and 12 minutes, Harpster began with, you know, how's the money distributed? What is COP? What is time magic? You know, swim with the sharks is too small, he'd scratch it. Charo is cruel to your animals, abusive, it'd scratch that one. Or stay with what is presented. Attorney Ferguson discussed the procedures to remand. And then councilperson Brajas at time, two hours and 26 minutes.
So, Mr. Holder, if you can just direct generally to council, not specific.
I know.
I appreciate that.
I'll just finish with, please approve the 2025 recommendation.
And I understand the sentiments of frustration, I appreciate that.
Thank you. I could go on, but I'll pause.
Do we have any additional public comments? Anyone that wants to speak, go for it. I mean, just... Go ahead.
I'm a mayor and in council. My name is Dean Smith. I work for HLE Engineering and Land Surveying, and I'm in Yakima. I'm here on behalf of Twin City Foods. Under new business, I was told this is the appropriate time to talk, since it's not on a normal agenda. Under new business, what I'm referring to is proposed ordinance, or one that's in draft mode. And in looking through that, there's some questions on how to calculate the charges for Twin City Foods. And I think there might be an error in the table on at least one of the items. So I can go through that specifically if you need me to, or maybe I should talk to one of the staff people. But in my calculations, it looks like their annual bill at minimum would be $3.6 million. Right now, they're paying a little bit less than a million. And that's quite a change for a vegetable processing company. And that's the minimum, based on their allocated capacity or their permitted capacity. And it seems like we need to try to give them more control over what their bill would be. I work in wastewater, and so I understand, I think both sides better than many. But, and so I understand the city's concern, and you have to cover your costs. Kind of like go back to the beginning, we toured this facility, and there was a really neat video of how the processing plant, the PWRF, was started. It was to help these types of industry be more efficient in your community. And we're at the point now with those type of changes where, honestly, they're having to rethink, what other options do they have? It would be tragic to lose any of these people, and I'm not for that, I'm not promoting that that would happen. But I think it's just something that we need to be careful about and look at opportunities. But, so again, the main thing, when I look at these things, there's a flow charge, and it says per million gallons per day. Their average, their permitted capacity is 225 million gallons per year. And so I think that actually should be per year, per million gallons per year, to get the things to work out right. But, and then probably the biggest cost is the one called BOD in the table. That cost alone, if I'm calculating right, would be almost $2 million to them. And, but that's a component that the city wants, that product, so you can make more natural gas and get a benefit back from that. And so it's a pretty stiff penalty, and the projected participation that they would get back from that is only about a half a million. So also, I understand that the taxes are maybe not going to be given back to them now, the tax credits, and we need to maybe see how that can happen. Since this whole group is paying for that point at over 30 years, if they stick around for 30 years, that is. So anyway, that's the message, it needs to be more workable for them. And some of the other options that have been presented are two and three times that much. Thank you.
We appreciate that, and certainly any written feedback or comments mailed through the city staff would be also helpful. I'm sure you guys have engaged in those conversations, and so appreciate you bringing that to light. Do we have any additional public comments? Go ahead, Mayor.
This one? Mary Mahoney, Pasco resident to Pasco via RCW 42.56. Provide with over a half a billion dollars with the CIP budget or any Pasco budget, how much is going for a low-cost onsite spay neuter clinic at Tri-City Animal Control? The funds, how much is provided for an attached dog run in compliance with the Animal Welfare Act for an animal research facility? See and provide the deleted city council meeting on 4/1/19 with Pasco City Attorney Lee Kerr's comments regarding animal control Angela Zeiler and the Missing Rainy Day Fund, the WSU contract oath violations regarding due process and more. Ex Tri-City Animal Control Director Angela Zeiler stated in the Tri-City Herald, quote, "The dogs euthanized at WSU were ones that shelter would have had to kill anyhow," end quote. I disagree. Tri-City Animal Control is not a shelter, it's an animal research provider, and WSU does not euthanize the dogs. The dogs endure life in a colony for research, then they're killed, and body parts are harvested and sent as far away as Japan. Current Tri-City Animal Control Director Ben Ziegan has been sending research animals to WSU for over 20 years. You can see his employment history, first Pasco, then Yakima, and now again Pasco. Also, see Ben Ziegan's Pasco files regarding Belle, Kilo, and Jake, the Irish setter, and more. How much money does Pasco and Tri-City Animal Control receive from WSU for sending research animals to WSU? Provide Tri-City Animal Control Oversight Committee with no kill, sheltering training, including due process protection, guard against theft, and animal cruelty. See Chambers, Howard, and Hernandez, the $375,000 missing and 48 counts of animal cruelty was the result on that, and cut ties with WSU. Call Lee Kerr and WSU President Kirk Schultz for all other animal control facilities and rescues who supply WSU with research animals. Lee Kerr's number is 509-735-1542. WSU President Kirk Schultz is 509-335-4200. My comments tonight are for the record and to put Pasco on notice.
Thank you, ma'am. Do we have any additional public comments?
Evening. Justin Carey, lifelong Pasco resident. I was here a year ago, spoke to all you guys on your... A lot of you were sworn in that day about what's going on at the Pasco Planned Parenthood, or what's a result of the Pasco Planned Parenthood. Grateful for ladies' emphasis on the health of our animals in this town, but seems like the health of our unborn babies are being neglected in a lot of ways. Since you guys took office last year, based on Planned Parenthood's numbers, more than 68 babies, unborn babies, were poisoned to death with pills directly from their facility. It's no doubt that that number has grown based on the new availability and advertisement and that sort of thing. And then based on numbers that were last updated in 2017, Pasco's significantly grown since then. About 130 babies from Franklin County are murdered in the womb as well, cut into pieces and sucked down a tube, sent to Kennewick. Not unreasonable to assume that those are coming from Pasco. So you guys have the power to do something about that. Whether you use it or not is up to you. I just want to continue to make that known to the council. And in fact, invite you to come down with me. Spend a lot of time in front of Planned Parenthood, speaking to people, trying to spread the gospel down there. And speak to anyone that'll listen about what's going on in there. They... A lot of people's argument is, oh, they do nice things, which may be true. But I think any of us would recognize that any business that existed might do good things, but if they're doing something evil in there, you name it, I don't want to list it out. But if they were doing something evil in the back room, we would probably not want to solicit their business and not be a part of it, nor, I'm not sure why it even would be allowed to exist in the city, but it does. So anyway, I'm trying to do my part, hope you guys would join me in doing your part as well with the power that you have through the local governments. Thanks.
Thank you. Do we have any additional public comments? Going once? Going twice? Three times? Okay, with that, public comment is now closed. We will move on to item number seven, which is reports from committees and or officers. This is our opportunity for verbal reports from our council members. Ms. Blaisdell, you're up.
I just, sorry, I just want to give an update on Rees Across America. We have reached our goal and have sold 1,001, so 51 over our goal for this year. So that's exciting. So December 14th at 11 o'clock, we will be, we will need a lot of hands to place the Rees on each grave site for every veteran in City View Cemetery. So if you can come down, please, anyone that can help would be appreciated.
Thank you, and nice work to you and to the other council members. I know Ms. Parelles has been out there, staff, everything that you've done. I know we were kind of trucking behind, I think it was Kennewick. They've got a little bit more of history at the program, and so this is our second year with it, correct? Ms. Blaisdell?
Yes.
And last year was kind of like a partial slash really late game?
Ended like 238 last year. But I do want to mention a couple of the last people that trickled in. Edison from State Farm, Reesers bought 50, Christiansen King, Joey Reed. He donated some, and then Blackout Memorial Truck came in and bought 322. So that was a tremendous help.
Yeah. Well, thank you to all those partners. Ms. Brajas.
Real quick, just want to share that in my nonofficial capacity, I volunteered at Sue's Turkey Drive last Friday, well, previous Friday, to help box up 3,000 meals that were then distributed by the school district to several different schools around the Tri-Cities. But again, that was 3,000 meals that Sue's Turkey Drive helped put together to help families in need and help them have a happy, healthy meal for Thanksgiving. Just wanted to share that real quick.
Thank you, Ms. Brajas. Seeing no further lights, you know, just want to say thank you to everyone I know, staff. Hopefully you had some enjoyable time, had the ability, I think, to shut down the office a little early on Wednesday. And then hopefully, we're at home, we're traveling with family, whatever it was to enjoy, to our community. Hopefully you had a wonderful Thanksgiving, and you're moving on into the Christmas area celebration. And I'm sure we'll hear more about the city's Christmas celebration later on in the meeting. With that, we'll move on to item number seven, which is hearings and council action on ordinances and resolutions relating there to...
I'm going to recuse myself from the side.
Sounds good. Before I read this one, do you have a script? No, nothing? Okay. Item A is Public Meeting and Resolution Number 4542, accepting a notice of intent to commence annexation Wright and Big Sky Developers Glacier Park Convention Drive, 10% annexation petition. Mr. Raymond, you're going to be kicking us off here.
Thank you very much, Your Honor and council members. Good evening. This evening, the council is being asked to formally consider the initiation of the annexation of property into the city limits. Big Sky Developers LLC, together with Stephen and Vicky Wright, have filed a notice of intent to petition the city of Pasco to annex the subject property. Sufficient signatures to move the project forward for consideration have been received. And in fact, we have 100% of the signatures, so the minimum of 10% is clearly provided for. The property under consideration is located south of Caltral Road and north of Burns Road and constitutes approximately 6.2 acres. The property is within the city's urban growth area and has a designation of low-density residential. Staff is not anticipating expanding the area to be annexed beyond what the petition specifically requests at this time. It is anticipated that the city will have the infrastructure and resources available to serve the property in eventual development upon annexation. Naturally, the developers will be required to extend all utilities and transportation infrastructure and participate in impacted off-site systems which are attributed to the eventual development. As such, staff recommends that the city council adopt Resolution 4542, accepting the initiation of the annexation petition and allowing the process to move forward for final consideration at a future meeting. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Raymond. Do we have any discussion from council on this issue? Seeing none, Mr. Milne, can we get a motion?
Motion. I make a move to approve Resolution Number 4542, accepting a notice of intent to commence annexation proceedings for the Glacier Park Convention Drive annexation, providing a determination on the boundary to be annexed and whether cementing the zoning and the assumption of bonded indebtedness will be required.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Milne, a second by Ms. Blaisdell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing done. Passage unanimously with 6-0. Mr. Harpster abstaining or recusing himself. Go ahead, Ms. Blaisdell. Oh, did I miss an element of that, conducting a public meeting for... That's, yeah.
Yeah, this is a weird one. It's a, the council just has to have a public, a meeting with the initiators in public. So that was what we just did, essentially. But if they were here and wanted to actually conversate with the council, they could have done that. But doesn't sound like it's necessary at this point. Sounds like move forward as is.
Alrighty. I guess just walking back, are the initiators present? Do they have any comments? Seeing none? Alrighty. That moves us along to item number nine, which is ordinances and resolutions not relating to hearings. We have a couple of items listed, a few items. Item A is ordinances number 4746 and 4747, 2025 Administrative and Professional Wage and Management Salary Plans. City Manager Lincoln, looks like you're kicking us off.
Thanks, council. This is the item that we talked about last week, where we discussed what the COLA would be and then the wage scale that's appropriately adjusted with the COLA. So the council has the 3% option, which seemed to be where the majority of council was at the time, and that's before you tonight. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from council? Seeing none, Mr. Milne.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt ordinance number 4746 concerning the wages for certain administrative, professional, non-management personnel for the calendar year 2025.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Milne, second by Ms. Blaisdell. Any further conversation? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none? Hearing none, that too passes unanimously. Moving on to item B, ordinance number four, seven, four, eight. Did I miss, oh, sorry, geez, man, I am reading way too fast, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Milley.
Thank you, Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number forty-seven, forty-seven concerning the salaries for managed positions for the calendar year twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Milley, a second by Ms. Blaisdell, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
No.
It's a, this passes six to one with Mr. Peralos in dissent. Moving on to item B, ordinance number four, seven, four, eight, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, operating budget supplement. Uh Director Buckley.
Good evening, Mayor and council members, this also is a, or this too is a um. Item that we discussed last week related to supplemental adjustments to the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget. Uh staff has come, uh as we discussed before, has completed a review of all funds and forecast areas. Where there might be need for an expenditure increase and um so. Um I talked through the different instances last week, and if you have any questions or would want to revisit those, we can, but otherwise, with your approval. Uh we will make the budget amendment, and it's important to highlight that if the uh spending is not to level the budget. Changed, um the budget authority ends at the end of this year and would not roll over to twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, Ms. Buckley.
Thank you.
Do we have any questions or comments from council staff? Seeing none, Mr. Milley.
Thank you, Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number forty-seven, forty-eight, amending the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four biennial operating budget. By providing supplement thereto. By approch- appropriating revenue received in excess of estimated revenues for the current biennium. And by providing transfers and adjustment authority and further authorized publication by title only.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Milley, second by Ms. Blaisdell, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Hearing done, passes unanimously. That moves us on to item C, which is Resolution number four, five, four, three, declaring the city of Pasco twenty twenty-five legislative priorities, Mr. Lincoln.
Thank you, Mayor and council, uh ag- again, this should be a document that reflects the the changes that were discussed the last time when we had. Uh our lobbyist from Gordon Thomas Honeywell present. Um you'll see that there's several items that are requesting uh funding through the legislature and the variety of districts that were represented by. Um there's also been some uh added language to the community safety section. Um specifically, I'd call out the the traffic safety, tiring to uh always get. Uh more funding for implementing uh traffic calming measures as well, so if there's any questions, uh happy to take those now.
Do we have any questions or comments from council staff? Mr. Grimm.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, no, I just want to say that I think this um accurately represents their um. Our agenda here from council, and I appreciate it going forward, and hopefully we'll get some funding and support for some of these items, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grimm. Uh seeing no further comment, Mr. Milley.
Thank you, Mayor, I move to approve Resolution number forty-five, forty-three. Declaring the city of Pasco twenty twenty-five legislative priorities.
Got a motion by Mr. Milley and a second by Ms. Barajas, we have any further conversation, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Hearing done, that too passes unanimously. That moves us along to item number ten, which is uh unfinished business, there's a single item, item A. Amending PMC or Pasco Municipal Code Title twenty-five, zoning related to overnight truck habitation. And it looks like Mr. Gonzalez, you're gonna be our presenter.
Yes, uh good evening, uh Mayor and members of council, this was an item that was shared and presented with you uh in late October. Uh and with the intent of uh adding a new uh use in the Pasco municipal code specifically to allow for. Uh overnight truck uh parking and habitation, at least at a temporary uh temporary duration. Uh uh this is an opportunity to assist with the increasing need to um accommodate. Uh freight uh operators and commercial drivers in our region, given the dramatic industrial growth and and freight uh trips. Uh taking place in Pasco and certainly in the general uh tri-cities region. A couple of maps from the Washington State Department of Transportation demonstrating uh first mile, last mile. Uh truck stops or or truck trips in our area, along with kind of the overall um uh undesigned truck parking areas, ob- obviously existing, existing. Uh in in Pasco, uh there's certainly a risk of these, um there are a a limit uh of these. And potential uh benefits include addressing uh uh the um. Uh standards related to risk and driver fatigue. Um uh freight drivers gotta adhere to both a variety of of local land, or not local, but several regulations. Related to hours of service and they're driving on the roadway, et cetera, and that anytime that not, uh they're not able to be on the roads, obviously a potential. Uh impact on productivity. Um economic impact as well, the idea that uh for the reality that Franklin County has a significant amount of our job base. In uh and freight or related uses up near twenty-eight percent for agricultural manufacturing, wholesale, trading, construction. So certainly that the timing is is right right now to uh begin to uh think about ways to accommodate this proposed use. Within the city of Pasco. Uh uh as we uh consider this use with our planning commission and certainly with with council direction. Uh one of the things that uh is is um stands out is that overnight truck parking habitation is not specifically defined in our code. However, it is uh implied as a use that is permitted in our uh heavier industrial zoning district. So that's why you would see some of these as sort of secondary uses attached to some of the larger uh fueling stations up along three ninety-five. Uh but as a sole use, you wouldn't see these as an allowed uh project because our code does not formally define it. Or define its use uh with any potential standards as well, so the amendment that came from the planning commission includes. A language about formally designating overnight truck habitation as a recognized use, identifying uh. Part- uh particular zoning districts and the permitting process. Um in the planning commission's recommendation, they recommended a special permit. Uh along with uh the development standards with respects to site design layout. Proximity to uh potential incompatible zones such as housing, parks, schools, and uh off-site impacts such as noise, light, and traffic. And so a quick week, a recap of what was discussed in late October with council, uh council asked staff uh to uh bring back. A couple of maps, and we have those for you in the next several slides, that show a couple of different buffer proximities. You may recall that the planning commission recommended that uh there be a one-thousand-foot buffer of these uses from. Uh residential or mixed-use zoning districts, parks, schools, et cetera. Uh council had asked to see what that looked like at a reduced uh proximity, uh two hundred and fifty feet or five hundred feet. Uh including C three as a potential allowed zoning uh district. Uh showing what those air, es- essentially showing the truck routes, both the Wash Dot designated truck routes and the city's owned. Uh truck routes as defined in the PMC. And then uh whether uh there was some alignment with our residential park or residential vehicle standards such as onsite management. And then the surfacing, whether it be paved, hard surface, et cetera. And so what we see on this map is a uh uh in red are all of the currently C three zoned parcels. Um not all of these are developed, some of these are vacant, but they show the C three, the current existing C three parcels within the city of Pasco. Um and what you see in those red lines are the truck routes that are either identified by Wash Dot, the Department of Transportation's freight. Good transportation system map, or our own uh truck routes which are identified in Title ten of the municipal code. So this kind of gives you a uh an overview of where the C three districts um. Uh uh currently are within the city of Pasco. And then on this slide, I'll do my best to to try to um share what's illustrated on this screen, as you see the uh buffering. Uh on top of the residential and any other uh potential areas to uh put the proximity thresholds against or next to. Uh along with the truck routes, and uh essentially you, uh this came up with the planning commission, I believe it came up with council as well. There was a question with respects to sort of the donut hole areas, um technically, the buffer areas do encroach into those uh donut hole areas, but. Uh those areas are unincorporated and the permitting authority is with Franklin County, so our rules would not apply to that. Um our our quick review of the Franklin County code is that those are zoned um a variety of agricultural and and low-density residential. So this potential use might not be permitted uh within the county, however, we wouldn't be the authority over that. Uh what you see here in the different shades of blue, um is the dark blue represents that two hundred and fifty-foot buffer. And then the lighter you get, the um uh the the um the further away you get from it, and so. Uh what you can see here is that it really only opens up um areas where we already have existing industrial lands uh available. Or some uh heavy commercial areas up along the three ninety-five corridor, and certainly east of Oregon Avenue. We are beginning to experience a little bit more of the residential and heavy commercial or residential and industrial land uses within. A close proximity to each other, and so that's where that proximity might be a potential benefit. Um when you have those two land uses adjacent to each other, but this map essentially shows you the buffered areas. And where a potential project, this isn't showing parcels, just the street uh street lines here, of where a potential project could. Uh could go um along with uh satisfying the uh eventual development standards based on council direction. Um so what's included in the existing recommendation, which is what is shared with council today as part of your packet. Is a summary of what the planning commission had recommended after they reviewed uh the proposal. And so there is a definition added to the municipal code to specifically define overnight truck parking and a habitation facility. Uh the recommended zones were I one, I two, I three, uh and those would be done via special permit. A special permit requires a public hearing with the Pasco hearing examiner, uh they do not go to city council for final uh determination. Um and as uh shared earlier, there was a map uh illustrating where those C three zones, if council wanted to add those as a uh potential zone. Where these would be allowed, showing where those C three, C three zones currently exist. Uh the planning commission recommended that one-thousand-foot buffer, uh however, uh wanted to share with council what that uh reduced buffer. Uh would result in across um uh areas uh in the city. And uh and then a maximum facility size was recommended by the planning commission of fifteen acres. Um there is also uh access to the site to be restricted to uh the municipal code requirements for. Uh commercial trucks, which include Lewis Street, Twentieth, Eighth Street, Tenth Avenue, Ainsworth. Uh Maitland Avenue, Oregon Avenue, Fourth Avenue, all streets within that I two or I two area. And then Heritage Boulevard, along with their extents are listed um up here for council as well. And then a few more with respects to the maximum stay, uh the planning commission had recommended a maximum stay of seventy-two hours. Council had recommended, excuse me, reducing that to forty-eight hours with some flexibility with respects to holiday weekends or inclement weather. Uh uh the commissioner had recommended that there be onsite twenty-four-seven uh management. Uh council had discussed uh removing or reducing this, uh there was a question with respects to what are requi- what is required in RV. Uh 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 projects, residential vehicle parks, and onsite management is not required uh for those projects. And then uh discussions related to the surfacing of the lot as well. Uh with respects to whether that be a fully paved site, uh or just hard surface, or a combination of gravel, et cetera. Um and uh uh obviously, the proposal is is new to the city and in staff's research, while there's a lot of information. And uh available in terms of the benefit of a use like this, both by the US Department of Transportation's. Truck Parking Handbook and our own uh Wash Dot, um there aren't a lot of uh available resources for this is what. Uh such and such city has to actually allow for this. Uh so um at least locally and within our region, we'd be one of the, the likely the first to formally adopt a code to allow for this use. Um so balancing the need for appropriate and practical objective regulations versus. Um uh ensuring that there's uh protections in place for uh adjacent neighborhoods, et cetera, is something that both planning commission. Uh considered, uh one of the things I I obviously wanted to mention was that this was a proposal that was initiated for a, from a private business venture. Um and uh there were uh uh they did submit, uh the applicant had submitted. Uh some proposal, a revised proposal for uh council to consider. Uh those are attached, I believe, to your staff report, but I just wanted to call those out specifically so council was aware of them this evening. And and that was to allow C three as an allowed use and not allow them in the one eighty-two overlay district. And the one eighty-two overlay district is a really big piece of area, it's essentially everything north of the interstate, west of thirty-six, uh thirty-six. Road thirty-six to the city limits, so essentially encompasses those two red C three areas. Um uh so it kind of addresses at least residential areas north of of the interstate. Uh there was a recommendation to reduce the proximity buffer to fifty feet unless a buffer. Or and or transition area was established, uh there is no specific minimum or standard for what that buffer transition. Area would uh, how that would be defined, so it's probably something that we want to have a conversation about in terms of how do you want to define a buffer? If you're less than fifty feet from a park or a a a residential um household. Um allowing hard service rather than uh paved uh parking and drive aisles. Increasing the maximum size to twenty acres rather than the planning commission fifteen acres. Uh removing the trash can requirements, the planning commission had recommended a requirement of one trash can for every five stalls. And then also removing the requirement for an onsite uh management, so. Um that is what the applicant had submitted for uh consideration. And um uh staff is here this evening to share this with you and obviously take your direction in terms of what uh council would like to see with this proposal. And then uh we'll update the ordinance and bring that back to you for a final discuss or determination. So with that, uh happy to answer any questions that I can for you this evening, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez, um. Since I'm not seeing any other lights, I'll go ahead and start rolling, um. Going back to the map, uh the red map specifically, did did I understand you correctly that fundamentally? There was an option, we would adopt it to not allow. Um these types of facilities in the the overlay corridor, did I understand that correctly?
The the planning commission had recommended that this use only be allowed in the industrial zoning districts. Uh the applicant has asked for it to be considered that it be allowed in the C three zoning district. Now, the C three zoning district is allowed in any commercial land use, which they're all over the city, they're on uh Road sixty-eight, as you can see, they're on Burden. They're 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 uh they're all over the city, um but the applicant has also uh uh recommended that you not allow this use. In the I eighty-two overlay district, which is everything north of the interstate, west of North Road thirty-six up towards city limits. So essentially, it's everything from the airport to the river and north, um uh which would essentially eliminate the the two existing red. C three zoning districts, and it would also ensure that if there was a uh. Uh a parcel that was zoned from a C one to a C three and that commercial land use in that area. It would, it would not be eligible for this use, given it falls within that overlay.
Okay, and and when you say the two, are you talking about the two very north pieces? But the the corridor near the highway would be appropriate?
Correct.
Okay, yeah, I I think um of, you know, from my perspective, having the highway corridor would make the most sense. As they're extending it to, you know, the overlay that hits up north, I don't think that's not absolutely necessary, so I guess. Uh the shorter way of saying that is expanding it to C three seems to be a reasonable approach. Um insofar as uh we may have those exceptions for, you know, the the further north uh pieces. Um I've got a couple of other thoughts, but I see a couple of the lights have come on, Mr. Peralos.
Thank you, Mayor, yeah, I just wanted to make a couple of notes here, um I I think we should be more flexible in regards to the payment. I'd be in favor of gravel, and if if anyone wanted to develop some property, I think that would be fine. Um I think reducing the requirements of traps, trash receptacles to at least one kind of bigger one, that would be my suggestion. Um uh I don't think we should kind of consider these as RV parks to an extent, even though I guess they are staying for some duration of time. Um I don't see the, I'd never like the whole landscaping requirement for some of these um developments, I. People don't want to put grass there, it's fine with me if someone wants to entice people, if you want to stay at a certain uh overnight trucking. Um facility because it has a place for their dog, that's their prerogative, but I mean, that that for me, I feel like we should a little bit more flexible with that. Um I like the idea of it not being allowed uh north of the highway, I think this should be concentrated um transitionally in the C three areas. Or and that should be a allowable use, but uh you know, I don't see the reason why, even for some buffer areas like over in King City. I mean, that's essentially a truck stop area with some commercial, commercial, um you know, properties there, I I mean, but it's essentially a huge truck stop. I think other than that, you know, um I'd like the way that's laid out in this um new ordinance. And so those would be my suggestions, and you know, if we can get to consensus, I'd like to get this done, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peralos, Mr. Harpster.
Yeah, I think I concur with.
Yeah, I think I concur with everything Councilman Prowl said, um, I think five hundred foot buffer is the way to go. I didn't hear what his, the take was on that, but it include the C three, knowing that that. Broad and overlay district is not going to be included anyways in the end of five hundred foot buffer zone. And um, removing the requirement to pave it and allowing gravel to be sufficient. Um, on the key proposal recommendations. Just a couple of slides to the right, I think, the um, yeah, that one. So there's, with this, the way I'm understanding this slide would effectively prohibit those two north parcels on sixty-eight anyways. If the, if what the PC is recommending is that access has to be to or from one of these locations, is that right, okay?
Okay, Mr. Grim.
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I am in concurrence with my other two council members. Um, I don't think there should be a garbage can requirement per spaces, I think that's just getting too much into somebody's business. As long as we have something that they'll just take care of garbage, I'm also okay with uh, gravel would be just fine, the five hundred. Feet buffer is, works for me too, I appreciate the applicant providing some of those pictures, especially the one uh, from down there in Miami. That ha- has truck parking closer to a residential area, obviously those people are pretty used to sound anyways, being that close to a busy interstate and everything. But five hundred feet is probably the right way. And I'm good with any type of the, the seventy-two hours that was recommended by the planning commission. Or if we were to do our forty-eight and then make some exceptions for inclement weather or holiday weekend, I would be with all those. Um, proposals, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Okay, I believe, and Mr. Gonzalez, correct me if I'm wrong here, the seventy-two hour element was by the proponent or was that? Seventy-two and ninety-six, and I think that's.
Uh, planning commission had recommended seventy-two hours, and then there was a discussion uh, about reducing that to forty-eight. Uh, with some flexibility with inclement weather or holiday weekends, et cetera.
Okay, uh, so I guess, Mr. Graham, circling back to you, are you? I guess the distinction is forty-eight or seventy-two hours, you, did, are you indicating your preferences up to seventy-two?
Exactly, so I would shoot for seventy-two and then maybe ninety-six with a weekend or a holiday weekend or inclement weather, thank you.
Okay, thank you, so I think we've got a couple of things, I know you're looking for directions, so let's just walk this back to the very days, um. Do we have the appetite to move forward with this in, in, in a fashion before we get to the technicalities of the fashion, are we? Do we have, okay, so first thing is it looks like you can move forward on this, um, I heard a couple of uh, discussion points. On not needing paved but having gravel, um, let's take that, um, uh. Do we have enough folks, Ms. Brahas?
I vote that we follow the uh, planning commission's directions. Um, I do agree with seventy-two hours, I think we need to keep it as simple as possible. Um. As, as thorough as possible, but as simple as possible, so that people that are staying there. Um, know what the basic guidelines are and they don't have to go into the minutia of. Trying to figure out if it's over an extended weekend or something, so I would just recommend that we follow the planning commission guidelines, thank you.
Okay, um, so I'm just trying to balance the planning commission versus, um, so I guess, uh. Yeah, so we've got three for gravel and it, you're fine with gravel, okay, so it sounds like we've got at least four who would support gravel. Um, so that might be a distinction, sounds generally we're open to the seventy-four or s-. Sorry, seventy-two and ninety-six hours, any, okay, I think C four, Ed nods that. Um, I think the big other question or, or open issue is uh, the distinction of trash receptacles. Um, where the planning commission had a more prescriptive and uh, it sounded like Mr. Prowl and Mr. Harpster and I think also Mr. Grim concurred that. Not having that prescriptive, maybe just having a um, requirement to have a bin.
Yeah, we, we can certainly reach out and confirm um, with our partners at BDI, uh, based on disposal, what uh, would be appropriate. Likely it is just that the applicant worked with BDI to ensure that there's sufficient um, sanitary um, uh, facilities, uh, facilities available.
Okay, and then I think your, your big question though, uh, turns back to the C theory, C three zoning question, right?
Yeah, I, I think it's, it appears that uh, it sounds like C three would be in allowed use. Uh, under current council uh, discussion with a five hundred foot uh, proximity buffer, which takes care of most C threes. Which are adjacent to those uh, um, ho- housing and parks, et cetera. The only one um, that it would be uh, uh, appreciated to get some feedback on would be the requirement for a onsite manager.
I, I, I think, I don't know that I necessarily need that, did you say preferably?
Uh, can you repeat that for onsite, what?
Uh, whether onsite manager would, would be uh, required.
Unnecessary.
Yes. Is that a, okay, oh, you, you're a yes for a manager? But I think generally, Melanie, did you say no? Okay, so I think we're generally in the uptick of no. Do you need any further clarification? On any of these major points?
No, I think we've addressed all of them and so staff will uh, get busy and work on a revised ordinance for council uh, consideration and bring that to you as, as soon as we can.
Okay.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, with that, we will move to item number eleven, which is new business. A couple of items here, got item A, which is an update, amending sections of the Pasco municipal code, titles thirteen and three. Related to Pasco water reuse facility or the PWRF, and it looks like. Miss Sigdahl was.
Yeah, could, could we request just a five minute recess?
Yeah, let's do a five minute recess.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, uh, we'll be back at eight oh one. Hey, all, it's uh, it's eight oh one, we're back in session. With that, uh, we've moved on to new business, which is item eleven. And I understand we're going to stick with item A, correct? Okay, uh, which is update, um, ending sections of the Pasco municipal code, titles thirteen and three. Related to the Pasco water reuse facility or the PWRF. Sorry, missing though.
Thank you, Mayor, and evening, council, this um, topic is uh, regarding our reuse facility and the significant uh, investment. Um, that we um, have made overall um, to the facility. Uh, as you heard earlier, um, the changes to the rates are significant. Uh, and they are proportionate with the significant investment. Um, and also change in technology that the facility uh, has required from uh, when it was previously built in the nineties. Um, so we, um, Director Sarah would be able to explain this a lot better, but. Uh, before what we had was series of pipes, uh, pumps and uh, a pond or ponds. Uh, and now we're looking at a, a lot more sophisticated technology to um, manage all of our partners. Um, effluent, uh, that requires um, a lot more processing. So that we can apply um, the, the, the reuse water, uh, land apply the reuse water. So with that, um, I'm going to pass the presentation over to Director Sarah. We also have our attorney from Foster Garvey, Steve DeGiulio, on the line uh, to answer any questions that you may have. Um, so the three of us will be uh, attempting to answer any questions. At this point, um, what, where we are at is we are operating the new facility uh, at this point. And we need an ordinance that reflects the complexity of the new facility and the rate structure that is required. Uh, what you have right now that is active is um. Antiquated, uh, because the facility before uh, really was billed based on flows. Some uh, monthly variable fees and then fixed fees, which was essentially debt service. Um, to maybe do some big capital projects. Uh, now we require a lot uh, different rate because the cost drivers are uh, more of them. And um, and very complex, so that's something that the city has been working with our partners since uh, two thousand eighteen. Uh, and um, has taken a long time to decide on what type of engineering solutions we needed. Which is where we've come up with the facility that we've built now. Um, and of course, uh, the significant investments that are needed, and now we're, we're looking at. How the cost needs to be allocated on a monthly basis. Um, so what we're recommending at this point, uh, with um, the conversations that we've had with our processor partners. Is a thirty-year ordinance, uh, that would take a lot of risk off of uh, the processors. Which on the flip side puts it on the city's um, uh, coffers. And um, uh, and be able to move forward and have a rate that uh, we can start billing. Uh, come one-one, two thousand twenty-five. And with that, Director Sarah?
Good evening, Mayor and council members, I will walk you through this presentation, trying to focus first on what is proposed. It is also important to explain that for tonight's presentation, there is no action tied to it. Action is uh, scheduled for next week, so this is a discussion opportunity. With that, our municipal code, and I have a typo in this slide, but the uh, Pasco municipal code title thirteen. Governs water and sewers, and that involves all five wet utilities the city of Pasco owns and operates. We will be focusing on process water reuse. And as part of this discussion, it's important to keep in mind that. This cost of service for each of these five utilities is paid by the customers of each of those utilities. There is no overlap or cross paying. Um, in this case, when we focus on process water reuse facility, the users or rate payers for this utility are. Industrial users or processors. In any utility, the rate setting process involves evaluating what revenue is needed to maintain that service. And that involves not only capital expenditure, um. Operation and maintenance, and then of course, covering that debt service that we typically use when we approach big, big projects. So we enter debt to be able to repay that cost over time. So a cost of service analysis is done to evaluate how to allocate that cost to all the rate payers involved in that utility. And that is exactly what happens for water, for sewer, and in this case for PWRF. Um, and as is explained here, we evaluate each utility separate. Is the rate study in this case, the, the um, cost of service analysis was done specifically for PWRF. Looking at the complexities and users that are utilizing that service. So with that, uh, the proposed ordinance, which is different from the previous one you have seen, and we'll go back to see what that previous one looked like. But this proposed ordinance, as it stands today, um, addresses the changes to the facility. Uh, Miss Sigdahl explained the complexity of this facility, the new infrastructure that was built, the new technologies being used. And how each of those needs were derived from the type of effluent that we were receiving for each of those processors. This ordinance as proposed aims to ensure the sustainability of this facility. Meaning that we will collect enough revenue to continue to support those users and that we will have a solvent utility. And then it identifies in its language, the partnership with Burnham SEV, who has built. And, and will operate a portion of our facility. And then of course, it references the cost of service analysis, because that is how we're basing our rates. Again, the rates are set based on unit prices for the effluent, based on each treatment component. Or the type of treatment that we, or the parameter that we're treating, so what you're seeing there is a fixed charge. Um, which is monthly per user, and then there is cost for storage, that is how much of that pond. Each user is going to be using and they pay per million gallons allocated to them in those ponds. Flow, million gallons per day, we heard comments today, it should be million gallons per year. Uh, fair enough, that's a conversion of units that can be done. Um, uh, again, nitrogen, as, as is established with the units that are used in the permit. So each of the components that are being treated in that effluent are identified and each processor pays. As it is proposed, for the amount of treatment that they need for their effluent. Okay, so this revised ordinance is different from the previous ordinance you have seen. Because we have identified um, some of the suggestions that were provided and recommendations and comments that we received from the users. And so we have tried to accommodate as much as possible in this ordinance where it was possible, right? So instead of using a ten-year repayment period, we have extended that to a thirty-year repayment period, which effectively makes the rates. which effectively makes the rates lower. We have utilized blended rates, so that means that there is a single rate per type of parameter being treated for all users across this utility. The R and G credits, which were not previously clearly identified in the ordinance, are now addressed in the ordinance, and they are specifically said that that R and G credit will come back and be reallocated into a P W R F fund. Annual rates will be required to be revisited every year, and it will require council action to modify those rates. That was one of the bigger changes from the previous version. And then there will be some kind of a committee where processors get to review those proposed changes prior to council seeing the proposed changes to the rates. So that allows for input and review and checking of the math and the criteria utilized for those updates. What else was included in this revised ordinance? Well, we addressed laycomers and buy-in process. So when a new processor joins the facility and other processors have been paying for a while onto that facility, whoever joins in will pay for the value of those things that others have paid for. So it's a buy-in cost, and so this is addressed typically as laycomers. Those that come later will pay for something that was built, paid by others. It eliminates all references to contracted processors, so we no longer are considering W T As as an option. We have landed on an ordinance only based on the need for clearly identified predictable cost under a rate with council action very visible, all discussed in public meetings. And then we have clarified questions that were in the ordinance as far as language that maybe didn't have all the descriptions in it. So we have added language to make sure that all the questions received were actually identified and clarified. So that is what is proposed. So now I'm taking you back just as remembering what was in front of you a few months ago. So we had come in front of council and presented an original ordinance. We had a ten-year repayment, so it was higher rates, shorter repayment period. It was a standard rate for everybody, so a blended rate, but again, bigger rates, higher rates. There were no credits back to processors clearly identified in that ordinance, and that ordinance would only apply to those processors that chose not to sign a W T A. And then the W T As, as we had presented to you, had tailored rates. That meant that there were some nuances on how that rate was calculated, recognizing priorly permitted flows and constituents, and there was basically a reduced rate for those that had already been part of that facility. This needed a thirty-year commitment, and it was matched by a thirty-year repayment period.
I would just like to add that such actions where you're most of the times when you're creating a rate, you have a cost driver. And you say, this is the driver for the cost. You have many cost drivers. And then you go in to charge people. When you're doing a contract, you get a lot more flexibility as long as all parties are agreeing to a certain extent that you're not being overtly generous to one and the other. But it does provide a lot more flexibility in the contract that we're trying to utilize. That is not on the table anymore as many processors have kind of wanted to go into an ordinance, which is, takes a lot of risk away from them, but also it real allocates some costs between the processors, the bottom line being the same for the city. But between the processors, it real allocates the cost because you do not have the ability to be more creative as you did within a contract. So just a little bit of a nuance there. Thank you.
Thank you for that. In the W T As, our rate analysis involved having both credits, R and G and federal tax, coming back as a reduced rate, so they were already embedded in that W T A rate. And finally, those W T As require signatures. Those signatures have not occurred. So for comparison purposes, you're seeing a table that shows all the alternatives we have evaluated with the bookends in orange at either end of that system. First, you have the W T A rates that were the lowest rates possible, a thirty-year commitment, thirty-year repayment, with all credits reallocated back to each processor. On the opposite end, you're seeing the original ordinance, which had the shortest repayment period. And that would be applicable to those that were not in W T A. Those two together were proposed as partnering documents. Those two are no longer an option. So what we have evaluated since is what is the cost without those credits? And you're seeing it in the second column, that is just under twenty-seven million dollars of need for that utility yearly. And then we developed three new options of ordinances and landed in the most affordable one for processors. What we are recommending is a thirty-year repayment schedule within an ordinance. And that will get us to accrue those twenty-six, almost twenty-seven million dollars yearly to pay all our commitments and maintain the sustainability of this facility. So to go one step further into the comparison, you're seeing in the first column the original ordinance rate and then the proposed ordinance. Most of those components have come down significantly with the extension of the repayment period. That is the impact of extending twenty years longer that repayment period from ten to thirty. So you're seeing the reduced dollar amounts per parameter treated. And so with this proposed change, there are some risks, and it is fair to mention those. This system is effectively a turnkey system where there is no commitment to stay in the system. So rate payers could at any point decide or be forced to stop operations. And before is meaning not the city, but some external situation. And that could cause the city to find this utility to have some commitments that cannot be met with the rates that the remainder of the rate payers are paying, and this is P W R F rate payers specifically. This could mean that either the rates need to be changed for those that remain in the system or that we, the city, the rate payers, and the rest of the taxpayers in general would have to subsidize this utility. So the numbers are big, as you have seen in the previous rates, and they accumulate fast. So we anticipate that it's six months of no payment will have a significant impact, and other funds would have to be looked for. So what is the mitigation we are proposing to these risks? Well, we anticipate the receipt of a federal tax credit, and that tax credit is sold in the market, meaning that we only have estimations of what the dollar amount for that tax credit would look like. And we're looking at somewhere between forty million to seventy million, but again, this is just a projection. And that amount of money could be put in reserve in a P W R F specific fund to make up for any non-payment that may occur when a processor either lives or is unable to pay their bills because they're no longer operating. So that is one way to mitigate risk. And of course, the second alternative or maybe joint alternative is to come back in front of council and explain what the situation is and review those rates and have council action to basically reallocate that cost of that utility to those rate payers that are being benefited by it. So those that remain utilizing the services of P W R F would have to pay an increased rate. This is exactly how all utilities work, actually. And with that, I may have missed some points, so I will open this up for Ms. Seigdell and maybe our legal counsel online.
Thank you, Director Sarah. She covered everything. Just few points that I would like to highlight is that this is a discussion that we've had for a very long time. And the numbers are significantly bigger than what they've been, the processors have been paying. So definitely a bottom-line number that is hard to stomach, but a discussion that we've been having, not just on what the dollars would be, which I was really shocked to see that in August of two thousand eighteen. We had done some allocation of cost, and it looked like staff did a really, really good job of forecasting what the allocations were going to be like. They're very, very close to what the final numbers came out to be. The tax credits, they are speculative in nature. They are not credits that, you know, you think of tax credits as something you transact with, with I R S. It is not like that. It is, depends on the buyer, depends on the market, depends on how the economy is doing. So more speculative than usually what a lot of local government deals with. And that if we go with a W T A, which is an agreement, everybody would have to go with the agreement because of those different specialized rates that we're able to be creative with. But we are, but we're not able to do this mix unless you go with ordinance with a very small payback period, like a ten-year. So a lot of risk here, but also a lot of reward. I would like to remind council of a conversation that I had with somebody who'd been at the city when this facility was first built. And they did not have any processors for about eighteen to months to two years. They built the facility. The city's financial condition was not that great back then, and they did not have anybody. But if you look at that area now and all of the economic development and the opportunities that that facility has assisted in, in attracting all of these very important partners in our community, it is amazing to watch what people have done and taken risks with, and it has paid off. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, do we have any questions from council? If not, I've got Mr. Prowls.
Thank you, Mayor. You answered a lot of my questions throughout the presentation. So the forty to seventy million dollars in this, those credits, is that per year or is that just for the life of the?
That is a one-time thing that we're hoping to get. So forty to seventy is a guess, but I do want to keep saying, and I'm the bad news first person, it could be to zero, right? Because economic factors that are outside of our control, we might not be able to get it. But right now, a reasonable person's estimate is forty to seventy one time for the facility.
So if let's say there was no payment, like you indicated, we'd have to essentially leverage the revenues we have in our enterprise funds for utilities and stuff like that.
Yes, yes. Not just our utility funds, but we would, yeah, we would have to increase. First, we would increase rates for all of our utility services, but that would also get us in trouble because, and so we have to be careful with that, because what service is a water user paying for? And so there's limitations, but the bondholder can come back and say, you have to pay this debt, and I don't care where that comes from.
Okay, I guess, I guess I don't, I don't feel all warm and fuzzy because just reading a lot of this information over the weekend and then, you know, it just seemed like, you know, doing the W T A, doing the ordinance, there's a lot of back and forth. And I hope there's a consensus with the processors and with us so that we don't have that issue where they don't want to pay or like one individual did public comment, you know, may not be here, and he just kind of put it out there. It was a threat, but that's a good potential. There's a potential there. So I just, and we're having to make this decision by next week. You know, I would just like to know from staff, is there a consensus that the processors are here? They're gonna, not a confirmation, they're gonna be here for thirty years, but they're gonna be here for a while. I mean, I mean, are they on the same page with the ordinance, I guess?
That's a hard question to answer since that would be their business. What we can say is that this is a discussion that we've had since early two thousand eighteen. So the numbers, while greatly different than what they pay right now, is not a surprise.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Prowls. Mr. Grimm?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess, thank you, Director Sarah, for the presentation. Just, you know, I appreciate the rate payers being evaluated separately as I can't imagine the P W R F customers expecting to pay for residential upgrades or vice versa. The residents here of the City of Pasco paying for what's going on out there. And I guess I just want to say to all the processors that have chosen us to begin with, you know, thank you for choosing Pasco. As Ms. Seigdell said, all of our processors are important partners. But at the same time, this is big, you guys. These are huge numbers. These, this represents a significant change to our processing community. And those that have businesses, I know several of us do up here, the bottom line is really important. And I know a W T A seemed reasonable for most across the board. There are definitely some changes there, but it does look like the representative from Twin City Foods we saw or heard here tonight did have the most significant difference. And if any of us were running the business, I think we'd be concerned about that too. And just because they're one, I don't think we should be dismissive. I'm sure staff has had an ongoing conversation, will continue to do so. But, you know, all this water's got to go somewhere. I am grateful, in a sense that we have this problem, that we are this agricultural hub, that we have positioned ourselves, as Ms. Seigdell said, to really just be leaders in this. We have ever-increasing regulations from the state in what has to happen with the water. And these unfortunately require pretty expensive solutions. I'm grateful that we're able to get some nitrates out of this and resell to Cascade Natural Gas for some credits that way. But this is, this represents a monumental change for the City of Pasco, but perhaps even more so for our processing community. And as much as we can just continue to work with them, respect them, listen to them, and just have a, have a great relationship and conversation going forward, I think would benefit everybody involved. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Grimm. Seeing over the lights, I've got a couple of questions or comments, I think, in response to what we heard. If I heard the gentleman correctly, and obviously he's not here, it sounded like his concern was that there, I know we use the term blended rates differently, but it's almost sounded like he was concerned there was a fixed fee plus there is also potential upcharge if a certain volume was exceeded. But well, the way I read this is specific unit, that is, certain gallons flows. Is that correct? And can you express what it would look like if, for whatever reason, aside from a shutdown, if someone like slowed production and didn't hit a certain threshold, what they would actually be paying?
Yes, so the charges as describing the ordinance are actually based on permitted volumes and characteristics of that flow. So each processor has a permit that is issued by the city, by the city, since the city is delegated by ecology, that allows them to discharge a certain volume per year. And then that volume of water that comes from the washing or cooking of the vegetables then has constituents, so that is the characteristics of that flow, whether it has high nitrogen or total suspended solids or B O D, right? And so the calculation is based on those rates that are shown in the screen multiplied by the permitted amount or volume that they have in their permit for each of those parameters.
So I guess that drives the question of, let's say, I'm permitted for a million gallons, but I typically operate at eight hundred thousand gallons. Now, I don't know why you'd not go to your full permit, but let's just say hypothetically that happens. What would occur? Would there be an opportunity to open a window to negotiate that and say, hey, you know what? Even though our permit is X, we're at seventy-five percent or something of that nature. I can see where that may be a concern of these folks where if they Of these folks where, um, if they permitted, again, higher than they, and have we looked at charts that compare? You know, um, Pasco processing is given X, but they're operating at Y and freeze pack, saying, you know, have we looked at those types of charts?
We do look at those charts and we keep track, actually, one of our staff members is here in the, in the public doing a lot of that work. But um, the way it's set up for the rates, so the vast majority of the costs are associated with the infrastructure built. To a certain size, right, to accommodate a certain amount of treatment. And for that reason is that those unit uh, costs or prices are set up. For a fixed per permanent amount, regardless of how much flow is being sent. You're paying for the amount of flow you order, so to speak.
Okay, um, I'm sure I have additional questions, but I think that. Kind of covers the, I think, that the pressing issues and those that hopefully respond to some of the concerns I already expressed. Um, do we have any additional comments from council? Um, this is just an update, not looking for any real feedback or input, correct?
Uh, we are looking for any, um, any large issues that you see. Uh, as Cons- Councilmember Prowls mentioned, you have about a week to make this decision, which we recognize is a short time. And um, if there's any big concerns that you have, as I mentioned, we do need to have an ordinance that reflects the operation. Uh, effective as of, as of one-one, um, so if there are any big concerns that you have. That you feel staff needs to focus on and bring a revised ordinance, um, we would be appreciative of that guidance.
Okay, with that, I'd see Mr. Grimm relate.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, I just, the, the slide you called attention to up there, I just think about how complicated this is. The, the charges depending on what particulars are within the water and. Uh, what's actually being processed, as Director Sarah said, you know, whether things are being cooked and uh, this is such a. Kind of just almost new territory for so many, I just appreciate, and it sounds like. Um, maybe this is better for Director Sigdell, but it sounds like this conversation has been going on since you said two thousand eighteen. This ongoing conversation and you said even the communication of prices that's was pretty realistic to what they were originally told. Was coming?
Yes, as a numbers person, I was quite impressed with um, those numbers, which I did not predict, but. I was surprised at what we had communicated back in August of two thousand eighteen of what we anticipated. Uh, maybe the cost of the new facility and allocation for each of the processor to be. Uh, but also want to relay the fact that uh, our Public Works Department has worked lockstep with. All of our partners to not just build the facility, but to agree on the solutions to build the facility and what kind of technology. Uh, going through the facility plan, even picking the right consultant, um, so being part of the board. Uh, or the committee to, to pick the consultant, so we've been in lockstep, not just talking numbers on. This is what it will cost, but also what are uh, the different solutions, like for example, at one point we said. Maybe we just need the hole in the ground and we need to let the water settle and then we pump it out. Um, but what that would require is an immense amount of land that is in short supply in a specific geographic area. Um, so that was not, while cheapest, not deemed feasible in the current situation. Um, and also many other um, engineering solutions and, and we came up with something that. Um, was at least majority agreement with our partners.
Okay, thank you, and that was gonna be my follow-up question. I know our mayor has um, done a whole lot of work on this too and I was gonna ask you what the. Feedback, obviously, we heard some from the representative of Twin City Foods today, but the, what's been the general feedback from the other processors? That has been fairly positive or?
Um, I, I think everybody is kind of digesting the, the new information, um, and what I can say is that. As we have something in place so that we can start the billing process and everybody has an uh. It understands what the cost will be, um, that we can continue this discussion. The facility is there. Um, just because we have a rate model now does not mean that that cannot change. Um, so it will provide us with time in the future to, to have more in-depth discussion because. We're all getting very educated in the matter now, um, so I believe that we can, we can all come together and maybe find a different solution. That works better for everyone.
Thank you, and I, I guess just one more thing about the gentleman, and I'm sorry he's not here, because I'm sure he could add some much-needed clarification. But he said there was something wrong with the, the table or he thought there was an error. I guess, Mr. Mayor, in conclusion, if. You know, it's possible staff could reach out and figure out what that um, one issue was that they had, I would be in favor of going forward with the WTA. Thank you.
Sounds good. Um, I'll give one last parting comment and then I think we can move on to item B. Um, uh, one thing that I do think I have heard in conversation and I, I think it'd be wise. Potentially to look at baking into the ordinances, um, a frequency upon which we review the rates. Um, maybe biennial, so every two years, uh, I, I don't, I don't want to put it. So it's so frequent that we're reviewing it and then like we're done with the calculation and we start back up. I don't think that makes sense, so. Annually or any less frequent doesn't seem to make sense, but I, I don't know if there's a specific. Maybe that's something to pitch over the fence to the operators and, you know, see what the, or not the operators, but the, the customers. Maybe every two years, if that makes sense, so something else to chew on.
We appreciate that. Right now, the ordinance reads yearly, but we can, we can see if there is an appetite for that to be extended.
That's fine, and yearly, I, I somehow missed that. I was looking for it and, yeah, I must miss that, so. Works for me. Well, thank you. Uh, with that, seeing no further lights, we're gonna move on to item B, which is presentation of proposed changes. Rental license program, Deputy uh, City Manager Sigdell.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and evening council. Um, today we're going to be talking about our rental inspection program. Um, this is a program that um, has been instituted within the city of Pasco for a very long time. And uh, we had um, our staff members who came in and presented on the matter. Um, today we were bringing um, back this issue to you and we have our permit and inspections. Uh, Services Manager Troy Hendren, who will be making the presentation and will be uh, recommending some changes. Um, to the program itself and looking forward to your feedback on how you'd like to proceed uh, for this specific program. Thank you.
All right, good evening. So, let's go ahead and get started here. Uh, the rental license and inspection program. Uh, let's see, so I'm gonna give you a little bit of a quick background, because I know you guys uh, just heard from us. Uh, about four or six weeks ago, so quickly here. So the inspection program ensures safe habitability, living sta- uh, conditions and tenants for tenants while maintaining property values. And neighboring st- uh, stability through proactive inspections and accountability of property owners and tenants. So council's goals today are similar to when the rental program was created in nineteen ninety-seven. Um, the, you know, we're still promoting the high quality of life through programs and services and promoting. Um, and encouraging the economic vitality. That's, that's our goal now and in nineteen ninety-seven. Let's see, uh, who does the program benefit? Property owners, managers, tenants, neighbors, fire and police and the community. I'm gonna stress, and I really wanted to add on there, and bold print tenants and fire. Uh, uh, those are the two people that this program really hits home for me, just because. Um, those are the people that are affected, I think, the most with this program. Um, tenants because of, of, for obvious reasons, and then fire, of course. Because the fire department is in and out of these, these properties constantly, whether it's kitchen fires or just even over the past weekend, we had. One recently where um, we had multiple subleasing and we even had, you know, um, in a, in a basement. Where there was no windows and only one entrance and one exit, so this is, this is a, this is a big deal. This is a big problem. And has been for quite some time, so that's why I really wanted to stress the fire department as well. So what is our priorities? Um, the main priority is uh, must comply with the Pasco Municipal Code and the International Property Maintenance Code. Um, yeah, this is mainly just to obtain the, uh, for your city rental license, so to simplify this list. Is to basically, is the house falling down? Is the, is the house being maintained? Uh, when you flush the toilet, does the, does everything go to the crawl space or does it go to the street? Does it go into the sewer? You know, we laugh, but we've seen that. We've seen it go to the crawl space. Um, do we have water to clean with? Is it hot water? Is it cold? Do we have any? Um, i- if it doesn't vent to the outside, then it's creating mold. Um, if you're lucky, you know, with the electrical, hopefully it just hurts you and doesn't do anything worse. Um, and in addition with the electrical, do we have electricity? Has the electricity been off? Do we have any power at all? Right? If we don't have power, we don't have heat. Uh, let's see, can you uh, uh, defective and inadequate emergency escapes and exits? Can you get in? Can you get out? Can Chief Crowley and his staff get in to come and save you? I mean, these are all big deals. These are, these are items that um, that we all need to keep a really close eye on. And this is why we adopted the International Property Maintenance Code. Uh, let's see, anything uh, which increases the risk of fire. You know, I've seen wood fire pits in the middle of living rooms. I mean, this is because we don't have electricity, so we cut a hole in our ceiling and we have a wood fire pit. Uh, I mean, that's wrong for many reasons. Um, other violations and uh, that uh, that effect, you know, another good example of this is. You know, cooking with a barbecue in your apartment, you know, that's propane, you know, that causes a lot of issues right there in an open flame. It's usually in the middle of the winter, right? It's cold out, so we close all the doors, right? Carbon monoxide. These are all things that we need to be aware of. So proactive versus reactive, um, my staff's goal is obviously is to be um, proactive. We try very hard to be proactive. Unfortunately, it's, it's very difficult, um, just because of the high volume. So unfortunately, we're very reactive, again, just because of the high volume. Inspection process. Uh, the current process is, uh, you receive your initial, uh, you receive your license, you uh, receive your uh, initial inspection. Then once uh, every two years thereafter, um, also upon a complaint by the tenant, upon uh, a request by the landlord. And then what's inspected? Uh, dwelling units, accessory structures, life, safety and health issues. Inspection results, pass, fail and uh, pass with correction. And of course, all of our pictures that you guys have seen, these are all very common. Uh, blocked uh, uh, blocked windows, blocked exits. Um, we've got uh, water heaters, propane tanks, hot plates. Um, condensate valves, we've got uh, um, our uh, our uh, hot water lines that are obstructed. We've got um. Um, in our laundry and our baths, our ventilation that is either doubled up with our dryer ducts or our kitchens. Causing a lot of either backdrafts or their, you know, we've got grease laden vapors. You know, um, intermixing with our dryers, which is not good, obviously, creates blockage and then fire. And of course, our pests, so we've got cockroaches, bedbugs, we've got rodents. Which is all uh, definitely a big issue. And these are all just all of our fun pictures. These are pretty self-explanatory. Same with these, a lot of electrical issues. So our proposed changes or um, I was, I'd rather call them an option for you. So the code options. So inspection cycle based on compliance, um, applicant fails an initial inspection but passes a reinspection. Um, or pass with a correction will be placed on a three-year, uh, three-year inspection cycle after passing two consecutive three-year cycles. Without correction or reinspection will be transitioned to a six-year inspection cycle. So right now, we're doing two years. This would span everybody out to a six-year code cycle, so basically you're rewarded. If you're doing good, you're pushed out to a six-year. Um, if you're still failing inspections, uh, maybe you need a little bit more attention, a little bit more education. A little bit more assistance, then you're gonna stay on that three-year cycle. Hopefully, you're gonna, you know, improve and, you know. Uh, work with your tenants and, and work with the city and get on that two, uh, on that six-year cycle. That's kind of the goal. Majority of our um, property owners are going to get on that six-year pretty quickly, I believe. So again, uh, just going over this again, uh, two passes. And then you're, you're gonna go back on your six-year cycle. Applicants who have not passed the two consecutive inspections will be placed on that three-year inspection cycle until they, until they pass uh, twice. The additional updates, um, this is basically just housekeeping. Um, there's four of them. I can go over all four if, if uh, council would like. A lot of it is just matching state code, um, adding a definition. In uh, Title five sixty for the immediate family. Um, changing the Uniform Housing Code to the International Property Maintenance Code. A lot of it is, is all just basic housekeeping. I can go into more detail if you'd like, or I can come back to it. Continued improvement. So staff will definitely continue improving um, to this program. Um, staff does this now, um, we do uh, many PowerPoints. Um, through uh, uh, through the Tri-Cities and actually beyond. Um, same with um, a lot of these other organizations and we group with either the fire department. Or uh, again, a lot of these other organizations through the Tri-Cities, so this is um. We can definitely increase this and have in years past. Covid kind of slowed it, slowed everybody down, but. Uh, the past, uh, I would say probably past fourteen to sixteen months, everything has increased, which is good, you know, it's all about education. So I was wanting to skip this next slide because I do believe in the program, uh, um, I believe in the program greatly. But if the city council determines that the program is no longer serving its intended purpose, obviously. It's your choice to discontinue it. Um, the current staff that is doing the rental program can be reassigned to other programs. Um, or helping do other items. Um, if council chooses to discontinue the program. Um, staff will prepare to present um, an ordinance to perform and remove it from the city code. I've provided additional resources on the next slide and information. Um, does council have any other questions? Thank you. With that, um, Ms. Prowls.
Just a quick, quick question on if you go up towards the additional updates. Uh, can you elaborate on expanded definitions to include immediate family? What does that mean? Slide twenty on my desk.
Ms. Prowls, which one was it?
Uh, the second, the second checkmark.
The expanded definition for immediate family? That is for the, let me get to it here. That definition is um, actually in um, Title five. I believe it's five fifty-eight uh, of the PMC and it's just basically for the non-rental certification. It just itemizes um, who, uh, who doesn't need a rental license, basically. It needs to be in this code, not. Who who doesn't need a rental license, basically. It needs to be in this code, not the one prior.
So does that mean basically if I say I'm the owner, I let my son stay at the house? I don't need to get a rental license for that?
It was just in the wrong location.
Uh, I can add the exact details to it. Uh, our code would read. Includes immediate family includes state registered domestic partners, spouse, parents, grandparents, children. Including foster children, siblings and in-laws.
And we've always had it. It was just in the wrong location. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Harpster.
In section two of the code. About in the middle of the paragraph, it says the annual business license fee shall be payable for each independent. Currently says business uh changes property, location and the first unit. And additional fee for each additional rental dwelling unit available for rental to the public by the applicant. So. If I've got a singular parcel with ten units on it, am I paying eleven fees, one for the parcel? And then ten for the ten units or?
It's actually broken down in our fee schedule and I can get that to you.
Look, can you help me understand in the sentence that the business license fee should be payable for each independent property location and the first unit? That that specifically that fee is that?
Let me get to that right now.
The paragraph starts the Uniform Housing Code. It's about in the middle.
I don't think I have that. Director Sigdell, do you have that?
Yes, I do, and I'm going to um try to answer your question, but I will. Definitely come back to you with a confirmation. Uh, what we're trying to do here is sometimes. A landlord might have a business and they might have many different properties. And so we're trying to consolidate that and have a license for each property. So that is the change from my assumption, but we can come back to you and confirm that.
So not necessarily each unit on each property, but at least each property. Where units exist. Correct.
Thank you for that. Uh, Mr. Grim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just, first of all, I just want to thank City Manager Lincoln. This is another example of staff bringing us proposed changes that we've communicated at the beginning of our term. And I think everybody knows where I stand on this. I mean, we don't inspect cars for safety, even though they present a huge hazard to us driving around. We don't inspect homeowners' private residences. And while I appreciate many of the benefits that come from this program, I'm still of the mindset it's eliminated altogether. I think we that we can be a provider of information for those that need assistance rather than inserting ourselves into a private party deal. I'm for minimizing government. Generally speaking, I believe the best opportunity for human flourishing is when government leaves us alone and is out of our lives. Thank.
Thank you, Mr. Grim, Mr. Braz.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, I share the same sentiment as Councilmember Grim. I think i- if I had to provide a list or you can provide a list of priorities for your department. I would think this one would be pretty low. I mean, you may have a different perspective on it because you don't want to see it. You don't you don't want to see discontinued, but I I would just, I would like to see your department do more plan review. You know, dealing with permitting and doing that type of stuff that could promote economic development. You know, you walk in hand in hand with developers, people who want to build, that's type of stuff that's gonna be. Provide a better return, you know, respectfully, in my opinion. And so I agree with Councilmember Grim and and I looked at, I looked at the presentation, I looked at the last presentation you guys provided and. I just, as of right now, I just don't, you know, uh, I I'm of the same mindset as well. I think this is something that's grown into. A program that we essentially don't need. And the sentiment that I'm getting from residents is, you know, this is, it's a nice thing to have, but. We we need to cut some stuff and this is definitely one of them. I if if this would have been. Some machines would have been in place. I wouldn't have had to get a rental agreement and all this stuff from, I was renting a home for a little bit when I moved here. For some time and I had to do all that stuff. So again, I just don't think we don't need that government in our lives when it comes to some of these entities and stuff like that. So. I'd be another vote for discontinuing the program and I I think you could probably find that individual who's doing this, some other work to do, I'm sure.
Thank you, Mr. Braz, Mr. Melney.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'd actually take a different approach. I'm one that actually does have a couple of different properties that I own, do run out to other people. And I know there's times where they've cut corners. I wasn't aware of it. So I will say when things are inspected, it gets the landlord to know what's going on. And there's been some really shady stuff where people have been doing their own electronics and just by the the will of God, the place didn't burn down. So. I'm all for what you guys are doing. I do think it just, it provides both for the landlord and the homeowner. Know that people are checking these things out that, you know, you are saving lives in my book. And so I. I'm all for updating it, changing some things around, but I would bet it's basically before. Preserving the thing and and moving forward again. I think it's a good service to have in the city of Pasco. That's my two cents. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Braz.
Thank you. Um, as a lifelong renter, up until recently, I do support this for the reason that. We need to make sure that our residents are renting properties that are safe, that are livable. Because we've, I mean, these pictures are real. I have lived through where, like Mayor Portem Melney said. The owners can cut corners just to make sure they make a profit on the property. And so we, again, we want to make sure that we're providing a safe. Livable place for the individuals that are renting. And this is not just like an overreach. This is just, again, we're talking about the livelihood, the safety of residents. We want to make sure that they're safe. Not only that, we want to make sure that our Fire Department, Police Department, when they're responding to a call, they can get in there. Safely and and get in and out. I mean, we're seeing wires stuck into an outlet. I had issues with my landlord cutting my water. I had issues with my landlord cutting my light. You know, it's it's you want to make sure that the residents, the renters are living in a situation to where it's safe. There's children involved. You can't have leaky roofs. You can't have, you want to make sure that there's collection of garbage. There's all these issues that these pictures show and demonstrate. The need to make sure that we are doing our due diligence by providing inspections. And, you know, graduate them to a three year, six year uh inspection program, maybe even more if they're doing well. Again, uh, it's not an oversight. It's just making sure that the residents, the renters are living in healthy, habitable. Quarters. That's my opinion. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Braz. I had a question. I'm trying to reprocess it. I mean, I I do believe that there's, I struggle because I'm on both sides of this equation where I do believe. That sometimes it's unnecessary, but I also see, you know, there's a place that I drive by at least weekly that's. Half burnt and it looks like people are still residing there. Now, that may be an owned property and so falls under a different thing. But there's no question that providing safety. I, that's the question that I had. If if a landlord and a tenant have either a long term, let's say a three or five year. Is there a way to modify it or have an exception built into this? Where if the keys aren't changing hands, you know, whether it's a perpetual renter or a longer term. Is there a way that we can write that type of exception in so that you view it at occupancy? And then maybe you don't have to go back in three years, maybe under the assumption that, you know, the landlord and tenant are still. Working favorably together if they're still occupying it. If if there's an issue, if there's, if it's like a passed with a correction? Well, no. So let's let's say you and I have a six year lease, right? Would you need to go back at that three year period? If if you and I, would the inspector need to come back at that three year period? If the keys hadn't changed hand and you you and I had a longer term lease that exceeded the duration of three years? I mean, as I see the code, I don't see an exception that says if there's a long term lease that exceeds three years. We may not, we we wouldn't need to come back, right? But but you're still renting it to me. Right? So the city would still need to come in to do the inspection to make sure that it's safe. So if the, if there's no issues, then we would, it would be back, I would be back in six years. Or the city would be back in six years. So we shouldn't have any issues. And so I guess my question is, is does it matter? Does it make any difference? If you have a long term lease, is there, I just wonder if there's value in providing an exception. Says if there's a longer term lease and, you know, not having to enter when someone's occupying. I mean, I like the notion of entering prior to occupancy, right? As tenant A moves out and B moves in. Having the city look in it, you know, at that opportunity when it's opportune. Again, the notion for me is if you're there for six years or I'm there for six years and I don't have a complaint as a tenant. Doesn't seem to be necessary to have the city inspect it while I'm residing in it. Do you catch my drift there? I do, I do. You know, that's something that we can maybe work on. It's it's just something to chew on. I don't think it's something that needs to like table the further discussion, but I think it's a. An exception that I think is worth looking at because again, I think if if there's a long term lease, there's no complaint from the tenant. Maybe it's a, it's a phone, you know, telephonic, something of that nature. So you're not having to enter an occupied space. That's that's just all I'm trying to get at. And it's nine o'clock and maybe I'm not articulating what I want to. But that's just my thought is I think there's a way for people who don't change the keys because they're staying there. There's an assumption that it's working well. Maybe it's a bad assumption. Doesn't, maybe that's all they can afford, right? And so I I understand both sides of the coin. I'm just thinking the minimal intrusiveness, as Mr. Grim said. Might be an option of having some sort of exemption there. So again, not suggesting it would hold up any further action, but something to chew on maybe down the road. Miss Blais. Miss Blais, though.
My, I guess, perspective is a little different than everyone else's just because I run a long term stay hotel. And we check our rooms mandatory once every seven days. Just because you never know. The stuff that I've seen in the last ten years. People can destroy one room in seven days.
Or less.
Or less, yeah. Not everyone's like that, but. It's my job to make sure that their room is functioning. And I will say that the Fire Department has. I welcome them to come in and inspect the hotel whenever they want to. I have worked with code enforcement to come in. Inspect the hotel whenever they want to. And it's more to make sure that I'm being held accountable, but at the same time. I'm inspecting the people that come into the hotel. So I guess I'm. Definitely to keep the rental license program. I think it's beneficial for both sides. But most importantly, it's to keep those people that are not keeping their property. Up to par for those tenants. Those are really, this is why. This program, I believe, is in is most important. So if they're not turning. Or complaining that they're not having running water or sewage, they're having sewage issues, then there's. A serious problem with that owner that um isn't holding up to their end of the bargain. So. I am for keeping the rental license program.
Thank you. And then we'll circle back.
Yeah, I think I've asked this before, but a tenant can reach out to the city anonymously to request an inspection, right? They feel like the owner's not.
Right, but they still have to give the owner the opportunity. They have to give them the opportunity to fix the problem first. So I think that's, kind of it comes to an anticlimactic conclusion. I know we've got two that are adamantly opposed and it sounds like we've got at least. Four. Can I get some head nods that want to at least move forward and see this on the future? I hear one, two, three, and I'll I'll be number four and we'll go from there. So I think the general direction is. March forward. We'll look forward to seeing, I guess, next week.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just want to clarify if you are, if we're moving forward with the program, you're you're good to move forward with the. Three year twice passing and then moving on to six years as we have recommended or, okay, thank you. We're planning to come, we can come back to you next week or we can come back to you first of January, the first meeting.
I I think if it's ready for next week and we don't have like some crazy thirty or forty items. You know, let's let's rock it.
We'll come back to you next week.
We can bring it back with Airbnbs. With that type of code. We were talking about doing that in twenty twenty-five. You can bring that in conjunction with that. That's rental.
I just think we move forward with this one and then work towards the other one. We good? All right, thank you. Appreciate the presentation. With that, we'll move on to item C, which is purchase of water rights and Deputy City Manager Sigdell, that's you.
Thank you. This is one of the rare days I'm taking the crown from Director Sarah where all of the items are mine. What is in front of you is a a purchase of water rights. Uh, we're still working with the seller. We're looking at. About one point four million dollars in purchase price and. Three hundred and fifteen acre feet of water rights. At the price of four thousand one hundred and fifty per acre feet. We're looking at, the reason that we're bringing this to you as we're going through some very minor changes in the PSA. Is because we're hoping to move this purchase and process along and not allow the the break, the Christmas break to. To stop us from moving forward. Uh, we're looking at about a month of due diligence, which we believe would be sufficient. Because this water right has gone through enough due diligence in recent time. And as council is aware, we're a growing city and we are in need of water rights. And where staff is looking at all of the water rights available for sale. That the city can utilize and and working with the different sellers to see what is most feasible. We also, as I've mentioned in the staff report, because our rates have been so low for so many years. There's not a huge amount of funding that we've collected over the years in our Water Rights Fund. There's about two point one, two point. Two million dollars between water and irrigation utilities and. So this will be sufficient. That that fund will be sufficient to pay for this water right. However, there, we have also applied for some grants with Department of Ecology. And we're hoping that we will be successful in being able to get reimbursed for this purchase. But we've not heard back from them. They're still making their decisions at this time. What we're asking of you is an authority to the city manager to be able to execute the contract. On your behalf in the future. And with that, I'm open for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Grim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say I would wholeheartedly be for this and look forward to. Just continuing our growth and sustainability here in the city of Pasco. And if this is a good water right, let's get our hands on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harpster.
Yeah, apologies if I missed, but what mentions in the staff report, minor and substantial, non-substantial changes. Are left to make to the agreement. What exactly are those?
Those are basically a little bit of a language. Uh, we're talking about due diligence time period. And what would account for that due diligence? What would? If if we're not, if we do not like a certain thing, would we be able to back out, which our current agreement actually allows for that?
Okay, good. Thanks.
Uh do, do we have the general consensus from council to have staff march forward on this?
Yeah.
I, yes, sorry.
Uh sorry, Mayor, I forgot to add that there's another fifteen acre, which is a small, another addition. Um that we're still working on the PSA, it's probably going to be changing name, changing the number. Um but um it was not ready for today's presentation, so if council does not mind. If it will be ready next week, I would like to bring the two PSAs in as well.
Uh do you perceive it being the same price on the per acre feet?
That is correct.
Okay, I just heard change in number, wasn't sure if that was total and number of feet or dollar per feet because you're buying less, just want to make sure.
Just a number as in from three fifteen to fifteen, everything else being the same.
Yeah, I mean, I'd certainly support that, the more the merrier, anyone oppose that? Sounds like, go ahead and bring them both together.
Thank you.
With that, we'll move on to item number twelve, which is miscellaneous discussion, Mr. Lincoln.
One quick item from uh Mr. S.
Thank you, uh good evening, Mayor and Council, yes, just a quick update on Winterfest, it actually doesn't start until next week, however, it starts next Monday morning with our candy cane scavenger hunts. We wanted to get the word out, that takes place Monday through Thursday. Um additionally, we have uh two free movies at the Fairchild Cinemas in Pasco, uh one Wednesday evening, December eleventh. Uh it'd be the Polar Express, doors open at uh six PM and a new theater opens every ten minutes, they fill up. And then a another movie, Fred Claus on Saturday, December fourteenth, and then culmination of Winterfest at Peanuts Park in downtown Pasco, starting at three PM. Uh with tree lighting approximately uh five PM and for more details, you can follow along on the city's website, thank you.
Thank you. Uh do we have anything from up here at the dais? Seeing no lights, that moves us on to item number thirteen, executive session, none listed, so I guess I can't extend it. Um and with that, item fourteen, adjournment, it is nine twelve PM, we are now adjourned, thank you for hanging out with us.